I'd like to call the order, the City of Littleton City Council Hybrid Study Session for Tuesday, March 9, 2021, is 6:30. We have a couple items on our agenda tonight.
Jerry, can you get your mic for me? You want to start over there?
Yeah. I'd like to call the order, the City of Littleton City Council Hybrid Study Session for Tuesday, March 9, 2021. It is 5:30 PM or 18:30. And council, we have two items on our agenda tonight. Could be a short night for us, so that's a good thing. With that, our first item. Our first item is ID number 21-040. This is the impact study fee. So the question is tonight for us is, does council support amending Chapter 14 of Title I Land Development Impact Fees? And at the end of this discussion, City Manager, I believe you're looking for direction from council, whether or not to move forward with an ordinance, drafting an ordinance that you'll bring to us at a regular meeting regarding the land development impact fees. Correct, Mayor?
Great. With that, I'll turn it over to you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. So Tiffany Hooton is going to do an introduction here, but I just want to step back in time a little bit and just remind us all. So here, a couple of years ago, council asked that we look at our impact fees, and we'll talk a little bit about what impact fees really are. But we did have some existing fees on the books, and council asked that we look and update those. And so that was kind of the first stage. If you, council, some of you will remember, we formally updated that existing methodology. Then council asked that we actually then look at a new methodology, making sure that we are taking full advantage of the opportunity to look at fees here across the development spectrum here, just making sure that development is paying its fair share. It's kind of the phrase that goes with that. So we are here this evening to kind of report on that effort. And so with that, Tiffany, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you. Good evening, council. Tiffany Hooton, Finance Director. This evening, we're going to talk about the impact fee study. This has been happening for the last several months in the organization, gathering data, providing it to our consultants, and having them kind of report back on what their findings were. And this evening, we do have Brian Duffany. He is with Economic and Planning Systems. This is the organization that we contracted with to perform this report. And as Mark mentioned earlier, impact fees were implemented in 2013. We've had a few amendments and changes along the way. And this is really looking at the methodology that we were using prior, looking at any potential changes to our methodology, looking at increasing or adding additional impact fees that we may not currently be providing. And so I think kind of three things that I want to just kind of point out is, we did kind of add some information related to fleet costs, adding that as a factor of our impact fees. And then we also are recommending a new impact fee, multimodal. And then we are going to talk about some of the methodology changes that were made from the current methods to where we are recommending. So I think with that, Brian, I'm going to go ahead and hand that over to you, and we'll run through our quick presentation and then open it up for any questions.
Great. Thanks, Tiffany. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, we're fine.
I'll get my presentation up on the screen. Just bear with me a moment.
Tyler, we have a bit of an echo.
Hmm. Oops. So Tiffany gave a good background on purpose of this study. We, I'm Brian Duffany with Economic and Planning Systems, normally based in downtown Denver, today over in Mayfair neighborhood of Denver, but we're making it work and doing pretty well. So we have a pretty broad practice in real estate economics, including fiscal impact work and impact fee work. And we've been working with the city recently as well on some long-range financial strategies and financial sustainability. And this is, impact fee studies, a good kind of follow-up project to that work. So our scope of work is to prepare a new impact fee study for the city, to review the previous studies and the previous work, and look for any opportunities to, you know, adjust methodologies as appropriate to reflect best practices, and look for opportunities for any new impact fees, which Tiffany mentioned. We have a new proposed multimodal improvements fee. We're combining fleet and facilities and adding a substantial amount of the city's public works fleet and general facilities fleet into that fee, was not in the previous fee studies. So my outline for this evening is fairly straightforward. I'm going to just give a little bit of an overview of impact fees, how they're used, the law, the legal standards in Colorado, and generally our methodology. And then we'll go into the draft fees that we're recommending and compare some comparisons to other metro Denver communities. Very simply, impact fees are charges on new development to recover or to frame the capital costs that new development creates. You can spend them on improvements needed to growth, to serve growth, to maintain the level of service or the level of investment in a community. And that's kind of the approach we've taken here, is to maintain the level of investment that the city has created over time. And that's consistent with what the previous fee studies have done as well. The fee revenue needs to be spent within a reasonable amount of time on projects that are of community-wide benefit, with a reasonable, with a useful life of five years or more. They are not an operations funding source, you know, so it's not a, impact fees are not a general revenue that you would use to fund, you know, public safety salaries, things like that. They're for capital growth-serving projects. The law in Colorado is fairly general and not terribly specific on what's required in an impact fee study, but there are a number of best practices that have been established around the country, and the US Supreme Court's decisions that provide a kind of legal framework for impact fees. Basically, the purpose of the study is to establish the nexus, that's the relationship of the fee to the impact, and to quantify the proportionality, to set the fee at a level no higher than needed to mitigate the impact that's created. And the legal standard is rough proportionality, it's not a precise mathematical relationship, but nevertheless, we need to follow those standards. Yeah, useful life of five years, I mentioned that. The law also notes some accounting practices that need to be followed, which, you know, the city already does that, it's just worth mentioning. There was a change in the law a few years ago that specifically allowed affordable housing, as defined by the community, to be exempt from impact fees. So the purpose of the next study is to calculate the maximum fee that is, you know, supported by that nexus and proportionality analysis. Some communities choose to adopt lower fees for a variety of policy reasons, whether it's economic development or concerns of impact on the housing market. And of course, there's a trade-off when the community does that, they sort of accept that they're not going to recover the full cost of growth, and would then need to supplement their capital funding with other sources. You know, impact fees are an interesting tool, and it's worth noting that they're really not a panacea for solving all of a community's capital needs. You know, you sort of, you can't, just to be a bit blunt, you sort of can't dig yourself out of a hole with impact fees. They're a development-driven revenue, so they're subject to market cycles, they're subject to available developable land, which is, you know, a challenge in a community like Littleton that's largely hammed in and has less and less developable land available. But they're, you know, a good tool to have in the toolkit, so that when major projects come along, that those will pay their share and contribute to the capital investment that the community has created. You know, I know that the council's been discussing kind of longer-term financial sustainability and maybe some supplemental revenue sources, potentially a new sales tax. You know, those are more stable revenue sources and are, you know, the type of funding you would use to catch up with sort of deferred capital projects. Impact fees are for keeping up. It's an important distinction to keep in mind. There are two main methods for doing impact fees, or a couple variations within those, but the two generally main accepted methods are incremental expansion and the plan-based method. We ended up using both of those in this study, as did your previous studies. Incremental expansion is also known, it goes by a couple different names, embedded capital investment or proportionate share. And it answers the question, what's the fee that is needed to maintain the current level of service or the current level of investment? So here's an example. Let's say we have a community with a small town with a population of 1,000 people and one police car that costs $50,000. We're just going to make the math really easy here. So we have .001 police cars per capita, and if you do that division, you have a replacement cost of $50 per capita to maintain that level of service and that level of investment. So growth pays its proportionate share of maintaining that level of investment. It's a fairly simple methodology. And that method is appropriate for communities like Littleton where financial constraints don't allow very detailed capital planning, or if you have slow or unpredictable growth patterns, this is the appropriate and commonly-used method in this kind of context. The other main method is called the plan-based method, or CIP method, and this is what we use for the transportation and multimodal projects. Here's another example hypothetically, let's say we have, so you're basically taking a defined set of projects that you are anticipating you'll need over a time period, and dividing the cost of those projects by the amount of growth you're expecting over that time period. So an example here is, we need a new police station in 10 years, it'll cost $10 million. Now, we need to ensure that it's only, that we're only charging impact fees on the new development-serving portion of that. And this planning study estimated that half of the calls for that new station would be growth-related, and so half of the cost of that station is in the fee calculation. We're expecting 1,000 new homes over the next 10 years. Again, this is not Littleton, this is hypothetical, so the impact fee is $5,000 a unit. We use the CIP method for the transportation impact fee and for the multimodal improvements fee. You have a brand-new transportation master plan, it is a really good guiding document for advancing and diversifying transportation mobility options in the city, and it's got, it has updated project priorities, updated costs. So for those reasons, it was, it's a good adopted plan to use as the basis for those impact fees. We did make a couple of minor changes to the methodology, used the previous studies, mainly to reflect some best practices. So currently, your fee structure charges a flat residential fee per dwelling unit for all fee categories. We are recommending in our impact fees that those be calculated based on the household size and occupancy characteristics of different housing types. So, for example, a single-family home has a larger household size typically than a multifamily unit, and so a single-family home would pay a larger fee because of the large population it generates. And that supports a couple of goals, or a couple of policies. It better supports housing diversity and attainability and affordability by charging a lower fee for homes that have less of an impact. Of course, we have updated costs and updated levels of service in the fee study, that's another major change. The new transportation plan I mentioned, the new fee categories, multimodal improvements, fleet and facilities. The other big change is a modification to the transportation fee. The previous fee was charged on a flat per square foot basis for all non-residential land uses, so retail pays the same as office, pays the same as industrial. And those land uses have very different trip generation or traffic generation characteristics. So in more recent years, the fee calculations have shifted to more of a trip-based or a vehicle miles traveled-based fee, where the fee is more proportional to the impact created. And so that's one of the changes we made here. And we'll get into the details of what that means. So here are the recommended impact, the recommended revised impact fees. So for a single-family home, it would be just under $7,200 per unit. Now, it looks like a big increase on paper, 59% from the current roughly $4,500 impact fee, but when you, I'll show later, when you combine that with TAP fees, it's about a 14% increase in total. And because of the household size, the multifamily or multiple dwelling unit impact fee increases by 10%, and so that's about a $400 increase from today, and with TAP fees, it's about a 3.5% increase in total. We'll show you a chart of that in a little bit. So for the non-residential, it's a little more complicated because of the way we're recommending that the city charge transportation impact fees. So there's not just one number we can point to, you know, the transportation fee varies according to the traffic that a new land use will generate. So we've calculated a fee per trip, and then converted that to a fee per square foot for a variety of land use types. So the two most common, which is the ones I'm going to highlight here, would be retail and office. So for a retail building, before the, not including the transportation fee, the fee would be $2.89 a square foot. So that's a 58% increase from the current fees of $1.21. Similarly, for office, the same numbers, the difference here is the transportation fee. So a retail building would pay, recommending $2.80 a square foot compared to office, which would actually pay less than the current transportation fee because of the trip generation factor here. So there are a couple reasons for some of the changes, the increases in the non-residential impact fees. The two fiscal studies that were ongoing when we started this project, two fiscal impact studies, took a closer look at the allocation of service demand in the city, how much services is being provided to residents versus businesses or commercial development. And I think in this study, the amount of services going to non-residential development is higher than we thought historically. So there's a bit of a shift in costs here to non-residential development. Let's look at some comparisons, I think this will help put things in context. Pardon me. So for a single-family home, the recommended fees would put Littleton, I think, in a nice, comfortable range similar to Aurora, Brighton, Commerce City, and Westminster. You know, the impact fees are not used as much in kind of the central and southern portion of metro Denver. They're used a lot more in the northern suburbs, I-25 corridor, further south, for example, Castle Rock, you know, but that Castle Rock is a lot higher in terms of their impact fees. They have different policies and try to pay for a lot more things with impact fees compared to Littleton. One advantage that Littleton has, though, is that your TAP fees are currently pretty competitive with the other communities. So that gives you what we call a little bit of headroom in terms of your impact fee levels. Right now, the combined TAP fees are about just under $15,000 for a single family. And, you know, look at a place like Castle Rock or Parker, you're talking $25,000, $35,000 per home for TAP fees. That's water and sewer. On the multifamily, we're actually lower than many of the peer communities. A modest increase, about 10% from today. And frankly, I think most of the new development that Littleton is going to expect going forward will likely be in some type of attached housing as infill and redevelopment proposals come in. There's just not as much greenfield land available for single-family homes in Littleton. So multifamily is very highly competitive with surrounding communities. The current retail fees in Littleton were kind of a little bit on the higher side of some of the surrounding communities, and they would increase a little more in this proposal, which you can see here. One interesting thing with Castle Rock is that they have discounted their non-residential fees, or rather, let me put that another way. The fee study there calculated much higher fees than they adopted, and their council and staff elected to adopt them at a lower level, as well as phase them in over time to allow the market time to adjust. But for office, you know, we're kind of back in the neighborhood of a lot of the peer communities around us. I don't mean to say peer communities, no communities, you know, perfectly comparable, but some of the surrounding, some of our surrounding communities, metro Denver. So just wrapping up here, and I'm happy to take questions or comments or discussion. Again, so the single-family impact fee that we're recommending of just under $7,200 a unit brings us closer to area fee levels. Modest increase of 10% for multifamily is just under $5,000 a unit. Both of those still within the range of many of the surrounding communities. The recommended non-residential fees, because of some of the changes in the level of service and the cost allocations, the retail would increase by about 33%. No significant change in office fees. And a lot of the other non-residential land uses, like industrial, you know, not really getting a lot of industrial-type development there, but for some of those lower traffic generating land uses, those fees would actually go down as well. And we also would recommend that in whatever council decides to do, that an automatic inflation mechanism be incorporated in the ordinance, so that every year, the fees are indexed to either a construction cost index or inflationary index, so that you don't go, you know, impact fees should be updated roughly every five years, but if, you know, it's, the market predicts them more, it's more predictable for the market if they're escalated annually at a predictable rate, and then you don't come in five years or so with a major increase because they weren't indexed to inflation. So that's, and it also helps you keep up with costs. And so that's definitely a recommendation we would make. Tiffany, anything for you, from your point of view to add?
Yeah, I think I was just going to kind of add, you know, trying to understand what this change could potentially be to revenues for the City of Littleton. And so looking at what development that we have on the horizon over the next year, it's not a significant increase as some might hope. It's about a $150,000 increase if we implement these new fees. I think one thing that we need to understand is, some of these changes impact a certain industry more than others, and so we might want to be a little cognizant of when we implement these, and so that we can provide enough notice to the community and to the developers, so that they understand that these changes are coming. So, you know, I think it's important, too, that, you know, as Brian mentioned, impact fees are to help growth pay for growth, it's not to subsidize, it's not to address any operational concerns or constraints. So I think I just want to make sure that we keep that in our foremind when we're talking about impact fees.
Yeah, and I would just reiterate that it's a good tool to have in the quiver, because when you, you know, when development cycles are unpredictable and when big projects come in, if you don't have them on the books, you're going to, you would then miss out on the revenues that would be generated.
Okay. I think with that, if you have any questions, Brian's here, I'm here, Reed and Mark are here as well, be happy to answer.
We'll start with Mayor Protam.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Brian, for your presentation, I appreciate that. Can everyone hear me? I think this is on.
Sounds like it is.
Okay.
Sounds a little muffled.
In case I sneeze, yeah. So I, yeah, I guess I'm hoping for a little bit more precise explanation for the recommended impact fees across the various uses. As we've just heard, impact fees are intended to help growth pay for growth, so to make sure that the additional services and level of service that are needed for new development are met, right, that we can pay for fire engines and so on. It sounds like what I'm hearing, as far as your recommendations, is, oh, this compares favorably or in some way to neighboring communities. I guess can you elaborate more on what that means? Is it an average compared to other communities? Is it 10% higher, 10% lower? And why do we particularly care how we're comparing to neighboring communities? Are we sure that this is going to make growth pay its own way? And I guess keeping in mind that historically, we've had too few, from my perspective, too few impact fees coming into the city. So, yeah.
Sure. Yeah, so we have calculated the maximum, allow the maximum fee that the fee study supports. So that is, you know, these fees recover the full cost of development. The, there are a lot of factors that, let me answer your other question first. Many places like to know what their neighbors are charging in impact fees. It's just, it's just a kind of a common thing that is done as part of the fee study, it's always a question to come up. And, you know, it is for those reasons I mentioned earlier, people, some communities are concerned about competitiveness in the market, affordability, cost of development, things like that, not to say that you're not, but, you know, it's, the fee levels are very context-dependent. You know, in an infill community like Littleton, it's, we're trying to maintain a level of service. It's a very different context than to a place like Castle Rock that's, you know, growing in all four directions and needing, or in Aurora, you know, growing to the east, the north, the south, where they're having to, you know, they have major, major capital projects that they need to do. Littleton is growing more slowly, and the, you know, the capital needs are not as Littleton is growing more slowly, and the, you know, the capital needs are not as great in terms of sheer dollar amounts, so that it's one of the reasons the fees kind of come out a little bit lower here. But no, we are, you know, we're, the fees that we've calculated there are what we recommend as the maximum. Does that answer your question?
I mean, if a satisfactory answer to the question is that we're trying to compare favorably to neighbors, then yes, it answers the question. I guess I'm still curious, given our history of charging too few impact fees, why we wouldn't want to increase our impact fees more? And I guess I'm still not hearing an answer in terms of, does this pay for cost of service?
Well, legally, you can't use impact fees, you can't charge new development for a higher level of service than you're providing to existing residents. It's, it creates some legal issues to try to do that. So, you know, we've worked closely with Tiffany and her staff and with Public Works to ensure that we are accounting for the full level of service that the city provides. You know, and different cities provide different levels of service, so their fees are gonna, their impact fees are gonna vary accordingly to the level of service that they provide.
I think one thing that I might add, and hopefully this doesn't confuse it anymore, but, you know, in communities like Castle Rock who are growing out, you know, they're having to build roads, they're having to build lanes, additional traffic needs, things like that, and that could be why they have a higher impact fee, is because they're predicting that they're gonna be able to, or they're gonna have to accommodate for those increases in growth. Whereas here in Littleton, you know, we're pretty much landlocked and we're not having to address some of those issues. We still have our own, and that's why we worked really closely with the Public Works Department in identifying, you know, are there areas of the city that we want to expand the number of lanes? Do we want to add turn lanes, bike modal, bike lanes or whatever? So I think that could be a difference, too, when you're looking at communities around us and understanding why ours might be lower than theirs. Does that kind of help?
You know, I'll just add, too, that, you know, we, you know, legally and just sort of morally, we can't approach an impact fee study as, you know, trying to, I'm not suggesting you're implying this, but, you know, we can't sort of go into an impact fee study and say, okay, how can we get the maximum amount of revenue out of this? We have to follow established methodologies and, you know, kind of do them by the books. It really comes down to the varying levels of service and the varying capital needs that different communities have. But, you know, we did, you know, there were some pretty significant things that we added into here that previous fee studies didn't have. For example, the entire police fleet, the previous studies were just looking at the replacement cost of the fleet, so I can't remember exactly what the new, you know, the new Ford Explorer patrol vehicles are maybe $55,000 bucks to buy, but there's another $15,000 of equipment that needs to go into those to get them ready for service, and that was something we found that we added into the replacement cost. So some of those, why some of those fees went up.
Thank you. City manager.
City manager, I'm sorry. All right, thank you, Mayor. Just adding my perspective to the work that's been done and maybe Mayor Protam, your question. I guess I would answer it maybe a little differently. You know, I think the request the council made of us was to look at the opportunity to maximize, you know, the legal foundation here for us to charge impact fees, to make sure that we are doing what we can to, for growth to pay its fair share. And I think that Brian has touched on a couple of things that, in my view, are a big change for us, and, you know, based on my experience, a really good practice. One is to move to this trip generation concept, where you are looking at different land use types based on that trip generation. There are, there's a manual, the Institute of Traffic Engineers, that use this thing as a bible here across the country, and so this is kind of the basis of those kinds of decisions, clearly a best management practice that we haven't done. So in my opinion, this is a step up for us to make sure that we are proportioning the impact, the cost accordingly. So I think that's a, definitely a good move for us. The other piece I would answer is that in the end, this is the policy question, is, you know, does the council really want to, you know, maximize the opportunity here so that growth pays its fair share? I think the answer to that is that our consultant has provided a pretty clear methodology, a pretty clear upgrade to that issue. Now, do we really care about our neighbors and what they charge? Well, maybe not. And I think it is a typical practice, just to kind of see, what are the others charging? Because I have to be honest, it's really difficult, as Brian's kind of attesting to, to make sure that, you know, we're, one community is exactly like another, because in the end, none of them match. And so we're just trying to get an overall judgment about, you know, are we, are we gonna somehow price ourselves out of, may say, retail or something like that that we're trying to attract? So I think that's kind of the main purpose of why you put in some of these other comparison cities.
Thank you. Councilmember Driscoll.
Yeah, great lead in, Mark. Tiffany, when was the last time we updated our impact fees?
So the original study, I updated it internally in 2019, and I believe it was 2018 that we had the previous consultant update the one that they had done originally. So this is completely a new complete impact fee model.
You know, I look at retail jumping up 33%, a single-family jumping up 59%, and multifamily jumping up 10%, seems like those are awfully big jumps in one year. Have we considered, well, I know you're looking for direction today. Are we trying to catch up? Why such huge jumps in those particular columns?
Yeah, go ahead, Brian.
Yeah, biggest difference on the single-family, so today, all of the impact fees are, residential fees are a flat fee per unit. And so, you know, they're assuming that all unit types have the same occupancy characteristics. Here, we've used, for most of these fee categories, we've calculated sort of, let's just say, a per capita cost, and we multiply it by household size to get that impact fee. So household size for single-family is 2.6, household size for multifamily, I recall, is 1.7. So there's a pretty big difference between the two of those. So that's why there's a jump. But just, you know, there's, it's interesting that when you look at the single-family fees in conjunction with the tap fees, so if I'm a builder, the check I write at the counter is for all of that, right? So the single-family impact fees on their own were the, whatever, the 59% increase, but combined with the tap fees, it's a 14% increase. And there are options, too, if, you know, if council would like to adopt the fees at these levels, you could, you could consider phasing them in over time. That's pretty common practice to do that, you know, two, one, two, three-year phase in to get to the recommended levels, and then inflation index thereafter.
And then the one you had mentioned, the inflation mechanic is indexed.
You know, every year, I would be more favored, maybe by, you know, over two years or so or three years, what's your thought on that?
It's easier if we do it every year, because we can just tie it to the budget and the annual appropriation and the fee resolution. It's pretty common practice that other organizations do that. We do that with a number of other things, too, internally, so my recommendation would be to look at it at least annually.
And then, of course, you know, with these impact fees.
Mike, microphone.
I don't know, Mark. These impact fees, do you think it will hurt development at all? I imagine builders do look around. They shop a little bit and say, well, we can save X amount of dollars if we go to some less for neighboring community.
Well, I'm gonna venture into something here, and then I'm gonna look to Brian to help bail me out if I go too deep. But, you know, I've been involved in this for most of my career, and I think that one of the, one of the pieces of information that I remember seeing early on when the country was kind of wrestling with this is where is the real fee paid for? Where does that translate in time? Some of the initial studies, and I'm not sure how that is viewed today, but it doesn't necessarily raise the cost of construction as much as it lowers the cost of land. So, I know this was, there's been studies about this, that may not be true today, so this is where, Brian, you may have to bail me out, but.
Sure. Hopefully, my thoughts.
Yeah, so Brian, why don't you comment on that?
I mean, look, look around at the pace of development in many of the surrounding communities with high fee levels. I keep coming back to Castle Rock, it's like, I think it's the fastest-growing community in the metro area, and with some of the highest fees, and they're still cranking out 500, 600, 700 housing units a year. Now, real estate, think about real estate, you know, location, you are proximate to downtown, you're proximate to Tech Center, you're proximate to Meridian, you have light rail, you have the Platte River bike trails, a lot of amenities, you know, very centrally well-located community. You have a monopoly on your location. If there aren't that, as many, there are not a lot of options, you know, for infill development. Places are getting more and more scarce and competitive, so I don't see the fees having a measurable impact on development in Littleton.
City manager.
The one thing I would suggest council discuss a little bit is what Brian was suggesting. If there is maybe, you know, some uneasiness about kind of the level of increase, if you want to phase it, that is a very common practice, and I'm certainly used to that, whether it's, as Brian was suggesting, two, three years, and then cost of inflation after that, common practice.
I think the other thing to remember, too, is that, you know, so the single-family fees would be a more significant increase compared to what they are today, but I'm not sure that we're expecting a lot of single-family detached development in Littleton compared to, you know, infill, multifamily, and attached housing. And the increase on those, on those fees would be less. It's about a 10% increase on the fees alone, and then with, when you're considering tap fees, it's, I think, 3.6% is the increase that I calculated.
Great, thank you. Did you want to say something? Councilmember Elrod, then me, and then Scott.
Thank you. So where I'm concerned with this is, actually, let me level set. For infill and redevelopment, like, what qualifies for that? Is that like a scrape and rebuild, or is it more than 50% of the building? So what's the redevelopment criteria? New is clear, but just trying to understand it.
I think generally speaking, when we have a new application for development, now we're looking at trip generation. So you would get credit for actually what exists. So if you scrape something off, whatever that use was, according to the manual, ITE manual, would create a trip generation. If you are looking at increasing that to perhaps have something that's more intense, then you pay the difference.
What?
You pay the difference in the impact of trip generation.
Can you explain that again? So you're saying if I have a single-family house now, and then that is turned into a multifamily, I get a credit for?
The intensity that already existed, say, the single-family.
Got it. Okay, so that's how this would work?
Wow. We will make it work that way.
All right. Okay, so here's where I'm at with this. You know, when I look at commercial, this is where my concern is, is in commercial. So we are, you know, this is our bread and butter. We, as the city of Littleton in particular, are so dependent on sales tax dollars, and I don't want to do anything that would disincentivize or make us not competitive to attract commercial. And in looking at this comparison, we do not look competitive. So, and I think, especially when I look at retail, we're at $70,000 now, so to, Brian? Was that his name? Brian's point, you know, the check they're writing right now is $70,000. Potentially, in the future, they're writing a check of $90,000 plus. There's also like this psychological thing that happens there. When you're at $90,000 plus, you're thinking $100,000, $100,000, I'm writing a check for $100,000. That has a, so much more significance than 70-something or even 80-something. So I don't think, at this point where we are with the city, that an increase in commercial would serve us well. To your point, Tiffany, even the, you know, what we get out of this is minimum, minimal, or, you know, nominal in comparison to, you know, our overall budget, and just the, I don't know if this is the right word, the bad impression or the optics of raising this so significant, again, especially for commercial where we are struggling to attract good commercial. You know, we haven't, you know, relooked at our economic development plan. What is that going to look like? So for me, I think it's premature on the commercial side. I would be supportive of staying at the current rate and just applying an inflationary factor if we've never done that before, recognizing that just costs generally go up, right? So that's where I stand on this, and I'll leave it at that.
Great, thank you. I'll go next, and then Mayor Protam. A couple of things. One, so our tap fees remain the lowest, and it appears that they're gonna stay that way? Is that where we're looking? City manager.
I don't have great insight there. I know we have a rate study coming before council here in April, and my guess is that you'll probably see some increase on the stormwater, the sanitary sewer. I'm thinking you will not. In fact, there's likely to be a decrease for single-family.
Okay, because our fees remain, I think, the lowest according to the chart.
Yeah, and Brian, are we including Denver Water as part of those tap fees when you calculate that?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So that, you know, we don't control that, that's.
Understand.
Not sure of the insight.
Another question I have, and this may be more for Brian. So the inflation factor, if we were to do that annually, do we have to justify our fee annually?
No, no. You just, it's an auto, it's automatic, it's in the ordinance, and it's just, it's indexed to whatever you adopt in the ordinance.
Whatever we are able to justify.
Yeah, you only need to, it's only recommended to update a fee study every, about every five years.
Okay. As far as the phasing, I do like the idea of phasing in the increase. Now, we did increase fees recently, very marginally, but we did increase them. Prior to that, though, it had been many years, wasn't it?
Yeah, the first amendment that we did was in 2018 from the original fees in 2013, so it was about five years. And then we did increase the transportation one in 2019, I believe.
Okay. So, and kind of where Councilmember Elrod was, on a house, if someone were to scrape their house except for a wall, that changes the fees that they may have to pay, is that correct? If they scraped a house, are they starting over as far as fees? How does that work? Or if they leave a wall up?
Well, if you're just doing a remodel of an existing house, there is no impact fee. So, you know, it's only as if you're removing that use and creating something different. And if it's, the use is more intense, then you pay that incremental difference of what that intensity is.
That is certainly a policy option that you could consider. Some communities do that, you know, so if there was a 2,000-square-foot house there now, and you're building a fourth, you're replacing it with a 4,000-square-foot house, you would pay, you would pay half the impact fee.
Okay. Okay, so that, not perfect. So Tiffany, the finance director, I think you said is gonna add, if we were to do this, $150,000, is that what it was?
Yeah, just based on the development that we know is on the horizon in the next year, it's about $150,000 increase to our current budget across all types of impact fees.
So it isn't like increasing our fees is going to get us out of any deep water or anything, because really, that's not a whole lot of money.
It's not, and again, you know, impact fees are to pay for growth, they're not to manage any operational deficiencies or funds that we need for other reasons. I think, too, you know, a lot of the surrounding areas in Littleton, in the metro area, implemented impact fees well before Littleton did. You know, 2013 was when we implemented. Some of these have been around since late '80s, early '90s. And so, you know, they had those funds early on to help do the expansion in their communities, whereas we just did that internally.
And then my last question, short one. So then, as far as these proposed fees, is that something that city manager or city attorney can justify?
Yeah, I mean, as far as having gone through an actual rate study, actually going through the impact fees, actually having methodology, for sure, I could defend that.
Okay, cool. Mayor Protam.
And then.
Carol's got her hand up.
Carol, thank you.
Brian, part of your recommendation is not just increasing the impact fees, but also how we spend the impact fees. Can you talk a little bit more about that? I think your recommendations are that we, we put some money toward multimodal infrastructure and so on. So that's, that's one question I have. And then a, a second question I have is sort of the housing version of the questions that council members Triskel and Elrod were asking, you know, we, you mentioned Castle Rock, you know, with, with their high impact fees, they're still adding housing, they're adding growth, but I'm wondering what kind of housing and what kind of growth, you know, we, just at our last study session last week, made it a standalone goal to sort of address housing in the city. And we have a study that tells us what kind of housing we need, downsized housing for seniors, starter homes for young families, workforce housing and affordable housing. And are we go, are we going to be working against that goal if we, if we raise impact fees on housing? Are we going to make, you know, luxury housing the only thing that can get developed in the city? And then related to that question is when would we, if council wanted to exempt affordable housing from impact fees, is this the time to be doing that?
Yes, great questions. So multimodal, I'll do the easy one first. Multimodal, the multimodal projects fee would be a new impact fee category for the city. So that would be net new revenue. It's to fund projects like shared use paths, grade separated crossings, there's, there's projects in there that are coupled with intelligent transportation system improvements that you're, rather than adding lanes, you're, you're making more efficient use of the transportation system. But, you know, I think, I think in many communities, those multimodal improvements are very popular. It's a big quality of life thing. And then on your housing question, that is also, that is front and center of many cities' policy considerations right now. Now, so, so your, part of your question was, are we only going to be able to attract, you know, the super high-end luxury development? Well, again, I think we have to look at, look at the, the physical conditions in Littleton, the land use conditions. There, there aren't a lot of, you know, any many, you know, large development sites to, to build new single family housing. The, and the single family fees are still, you know, in line with, with what many other communities are charging. The multifamily fees are actually lower than many of the, many of the surrounding communities in, in metro Denver. So, you know, in terms of, and I think that's the, that's the type of development, you know, townhomes, apartments, condos, that, you know, that's, that's part of that housing diversity mix that you're, that you're aiming for on the comp plan. You know, the, the multifamily dwelt, the multifamily fees are, are lower than many of the other communities. So I, I, I don't see, I don't see really any impact on the, on the, on the mark, on that market. Then affordability, yeah, I think it's, it's absolutely the, a good time to address it because you would want to create a definition of affordable housing. I, I think to, you know, the, the law says that you can exempt affordable housing as defined by the community. And the, the, the sort of language in there implies that, that each community can have a different definition of affordable housing. So take two extreme examples. We're, we work a lot in, in mountain resort communities on affordable housing projects and, you know, the affordability issues there would go up to 200% of AMI and higher, right? So for those communities, they're going to have a very different view of affordable housing. You know, in Littleton, we just need to, just need to do a little bit of, a little bit of evaluation, looking at incomes and home prices and AMI levels and then determine what was, determine what's appropriate for your community and make that definition.
Council member Faye.
Prettending to this, I would like to take us back to Candy Keast when we had Brett Keast come in, when we were still doing live meetings. I think maybe you hosted this one, Jerry, when, when Brett talked about Littleton, you don't need to worry at all about attracting developers because Littleton is so very attractive. What the developers want is to know what Littleton wants so that they can be here. So we, when we look at, at this, perhaps we could, we could, you know, we hire consultants to give us professional advice and then we often try to second guess the consultants. So Brett Keast has told us again and again that developers are not going to be scared off by any requirement we give them. And, and then Brian, our consultant today, is giving us some suggestions on what we can do to have growth pay for growth. And it's been really clear, this isn't about catch up or paying for anything else, but, but about having growth pay for growth. If, if we charge growth less than what he's recommending, then somebody else has to pay for the growth. In a lot of the books that Candy Keast and others of that sort recommended to us, they talk about a longstanding practice where growth doesn't pay for growth, the succeeding, the, the citizens pay for growth. And so if we don't have the development and retail and all of those things we're concerned about attracting pay to be here, then our, we have to fund it another way. And I think that comes out of the pocket of our ordinary citizens. There really isn't any other place for it to come from. And, and bottom line is, why hire a consultant like Brian and then decide he's wrong? Let's, let's put him and Brett Keast together and say, let's have some bees. That's all I have.
Good, thank you. Council member Grove.
Listening to the whole process and how they arrived at these numbers, it seems like a sound process. It seems like it's based on best practices. It's based on their extensive knowledge in this area. And we have seen from Tiffany, many, many presentations where our fees are lower than they should be in comparison to other counties, that they haven't been raised in a long time. And I agree with council member Faye that growth should pay for growth. If, if the developers aren't paying for those additional development, somebody has to. And it ends up that we are then subsidizing them when we don't need to. We can attract enough units of, for housing and for commercial. And so I support what they're recommending.
Good, thank you very much. Council member Elrod.
I think Brian brought up a good point though. I mean, this is based on data and calculations and that's what we're getting here from Brian. And he's also providing us a comparison. I do want to come back to retail for a second. And, and, you know, he even talked about why, why is one a little bit different than the other? So each city, rightfully so, takes a look at their community and their environment and there's some subjectivities to the decision-making. And that's, you know, in a big part, our responsibility as council. And so, you know, the, the concept of, so for retail in particular, you know, growth paying for growth, we, we don't want to be in a position that a retail developer doesn't choose Littleton because of the impact fees. At the end of the day, the incremental revenue that we would be making in sales tax far outweighs the nominal one-time impact fee of an additional 20,000 versus now. And that may be enough for them to kind of weigh their options. Is it Littleton or is it Centennial? So I don't want to lose that opportunity for, you know, a, for something so nominal. So, you know, I, I support the methodology, but I think we have to look at this with a little bit of that, you know, subjectivity and knowing where our challenges are in our community. And, you know, where I stand, as I said earlier, I think the, the jump in retail is not something we should adopt at this time.
I think with that, council, staff is looking for a direction on whether or not they should move forward and draft an ordinance that would update our land development impact fees. So do we have anybody who was opposed? Any council member who was opposed? I'm, I'm looking around.
So I'm just opposing the, the, the rise in commercial, but would support an inflationary factor there. So I would like to suggest that change to this.
So at this point though, we're looking, Mayor Protam, you're?
Well, I'm not opposed. I just have some sort of nuance I want to add.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
I, I agree with, with, I think council members Grove and Faye on this one, but I, I think we can temper the, the increase by phasing it in over, I don't know, two or three years. And I, I do want to make sure that if now is the, now is the time to exempt affordable housing, that, that we're at least having a discussion about it and, and giving staff the direction that they need on that point. I think that's important.
Great, thank you. So do we have, oh, council member Grove?
The only thing is, like they were just saying, we have to define affordable housing and I think that is a study session in itself. And so I don't know that we want to do it at this point in time. I'm not opposed to it, but I'm also thinking if we're going to do this at this, we aren't talking about 150,000 dollars, I don't think we need to phase it in. I think that's just complicates it. It's like let the developers pay for the, the impact that we are going to have to have based on this new development. Be done with it.
All right. Council member Faye, would you like to comment?
Jerry, could you clarify where we are on what we're agreeing to now? We had, you asked us, does anyone oppose this? Then councilman Elrod added something or subtracted something. How, how do we get back to where we were before she subtracted?
The question on the table is still, do we want staff to draft an ordinance?
Okay.
Updating the land development impact fee. Now, there might be, when it comes to council at a regular meeting, there might be some changes that are proposed. So that's what I'm looking for right now. So where, where are you on this, council member Faye?
I, I want to, staff to draft it, the ordinance, please.
All right. Council member Milliman.
Sorry, you took me a second to firm my mute button. Brian, thank you so much for your presentation tonight and I really appreciate it. Yeah, I do support the impact fees. I, I, as I listened to council member Elrod and was thinking about, you know, the hit that retail has taken over the last year or so, I, I think I would agree with her that it's a nominal, I would agree that maybe we should look at maybe finding a middle ground between what they're paying now and what's being recommended for the impact fees. Maybe there's a, maybe in there. And then in another couple of years, think about increasing it again. But we want to attract retail, we want to attract good retail. So I would agree with her on that. And as far as affordable housing, you know, I support that 100% as far as no impact fees on affordable housing. And I, I bet you that we could, we could define what affordable housing is fairly quickly with staff's help. So thanks.
So the, the question is, do you want to move forward or not?
Yes.
Okay, cool. All right. So I believe we have it. I think council member Elrod, did you want to move forward or were you wanting more information?
I don't need more information. It, it sounded like if we're given direction to move forward with the ordinance as is, what I'm trying to recommend is going to show up as an amendment. So I don't know that we want to, you know, do we want to address that now and say, you know what, what I think that is sound, not to increase retail? Or do we hash it out at a city council meeting? I mean, part of the reason we talk about it as a study session is to give more of that direction of where we want to go.
To the city manager and city attorney, what would you prefer at this point? Would you like us, can you talk this out?
I, I think I, I think I have the direction and going forward, we can take a look at what it would look like for a phased-in approach if retail is, at least what I'm hearing from a couple of council members for discussion at the next regular meeting. But I think we have the direction to go forward with putting the ordinance together, raising those fees and we can certainly talk about the retail during the public hearing.
Mayor Protam.
I just have a question. While we have Brian here with us, you know, a new retail development is a huge capital investment. And we were talking about millions of dollars to sort of scrape an old use and add a retail use that would even be subject to these impact fees. I don't really know how that, you know, how that type of business operates. Is this difference between, you know, Castle Rock 65,000 and Littleton's proposed 95,000 really going to chill retail development in the city? Is that a real concern or would this be more symbolic for us to reduce it?
Um, that's a, it's a, it's a really, you know, I've been listening, you know, listening to the discussion, it's a, it's a really hard question to answer, to be honest. Retail has changed so much and so, and that change has accelerated over the past year during the pandemic. You know, some, some communities, like many of council members have, you know, what I'm hearing from many council members is let's, let's not make it any, let's not make it any harder for retail to develop than it already is. And, you know, it's, retail is tricky because it's, a lot of it's so dependent on the site, the location, the demographics. You know, do, do you have a site in Littleton to get the next IKEA? Hard, hard to say. You know, I think it's, you're looking at maybe smaller, smaller retailers, smaller businesses. But I, you know, I think that when, as we're, as staff is working on the draft ordinance, we can, I think there's an opportunity there for us to, for us to work a little bit more with staff on some options for addressing the concerns about the impact of retail.
Great, did you want, council member Grove?
Yeah, it's, it's, it seems we're not really clear. Very clear about we want to have an ordinance. That seems very unanimous. What we're not clear on is retail. And when we get into amendments, that's a lot of extra time and work on everybody's part. And my suggestion would be that we kind of hash that out now and also the phase in. I, I think we need to decide if we're going to phase this in or not so that when it's drafted, the ordinance is drafted, we're pretty much all on the same page. So I suggest we hash out those two things.
What do you propose then?
Do people want to?
What do you propose?
Well, from what I hear from Karina, she wants to lower the retail.
I want to stay at current.
Stay at current.
And just increase it by inflation.
Pardon?
I want to stay at the current rate and then just increase by some inflationary factor.
But everything else is pretty much the same. So how many people agree with her so that we know how we do that? And then is?
Well, let's, let's address that right now.
Okay. Can I ask clarifying?
Go ahead, go ahead.
I want to ask a clarifying question to what Scott asked. So the calculation of these fees for, for retail and commercial, is it based on square footage or whether you're doing a 10,000 square foot commercial or 100,000 square foot commercial, it's the same price?
It's a fee per square foot. So bigger buildings pay more.
Okay, so a million dollar development is, well, maybe that isn't that big after all. But, so it is incremental, it's proportionally incremental too.
Examples we showed for retail and office are for a 10, a hypothetical 10,000 square foot building.
Great, thank you.
Jerry, I would agree with Karina. I think that's a smart move and I would be in favor of also phasing in this, this additional.
Yeah, we just aren't talking a lot of money here.
Yeah.
Yeah. So Grove?
I would go with what is recommended, but if I'm overruled, I'm overruled.
Well, it's, it's whatever we all.
Yeah, whatever the vote goes.
Yeah, okay. Council member Faye.
I will go with what's recommended by the consultant. I, I would like to point out also that some of our troubled retail sites aren't troubled by the lack of attractiveness of Littleton so much as their own problems. Columbine Square has its own problems that really don't have to do with attracting retail. Littleton Village has its own problems, which really, when you get down to the bare bones of it, don't have to do with attracting retail, it's other issues. I would like to propose that if we adopt, if, if we go with not having the retail fees increased as the consultant recommends. the retail fees increased, as the consultant recommends, that we include how we are going to pay for what the developer is not paying for in development costs. So there, if the fees aren't increased, there is going to be a need for somebody else to pay for those costs. Where's that money going to come from?
So Councilmember Fay, you're, you're still in agreement with, to go with the recommendation at this time?
Yes.
And so am I. That's where I stand on this, too. Do we have anybody else who is in favor of the recommendation?
Yeah, I would prefer that it be phased in over time, but if that's not anything a majority of councils interested in, then I'm in favor of the, of the numbers as recommended. I guess I do have another question. And Brian, I'm sorry to keep asking questions, but you know, you talked about Castle Rock is sort of expanding in all four directions. I mean, they're growing a lot, and they're funding more things with, with impact fees. Why is their cost to develop new retail, in terms of the impact fees assessed, less than us? Why are we more expensive than everybody else?
They, they made, like, like you are debating right now, they made a policy decision to adopt a lower, less of an increase in the non-residential impact fees. The fee studies, the fee study which, which we did there, calculated non-residential impact fees that were quite a bit higher than what they had adopted at the time, and they, they just, they made a policy decision to, for a more, I think they adopted a 15% increase over what they had at the time.
Yeah, I think, I do agree with what's proposed then, because you're telling us that this is the cost for growth to pay its own way, retail growth, for example, in Littleton. And I think that's, you know, that was the impetus for us to ask for this kind of information in the first place, was that we looked around, new development in Littleton, and we said, well, it's not paying its way, and that's not fair. So if you're saying, you know, from your professional perspective as the consultant we've hired, that this is the cost for retail growth to pay its way in Littleton, then I support the number.
Councilmember Driscoll, then Councilmember Fay, you still have your hand up. I don't know if you still have...
Yeah, you know, by keeping that retail lower, as Karina had mentioned, it's going to drive more in sales revenue to us, which makes a lot of sense. We look at multifamily down at Castle Rock, that's what you keep focusing on, Scott, and you look at multifamily, and they're the highest out there, or right next to Parker. And we're the lowest. So would it not make sense to increase our multifamily, lower our single family? You know, again, I hear what Carol's saying about keeping everything the same, and they're the experts, but to me, retail is what drives our city, and I'd like to continue trying to incentivize them to make Littleton their home.
Councilmember Milliman?
Councilmember Elrod's proposal with keeping, here they are, with inflationary rates, and then also phasing it in. I do think it's very important going forward that we try to attract a really good, solid retail. And Patrick's right, I mean, that's, you know, that's how we run our cities, or we're very dependent on sales tax revenue. So I would agree with that, though.
So again, what is your, what do you want to do?
I'd say have, would have city staff come back to us with an ordinance, accepting all the other impact fees, recommendations that they, that you've made, Brian, but then for retail, just keep it where it is, factoring in inflation, inflationary costs.
And that's something that can be done, I think, if, when it comes to council, don't you agree, city manager, attorney?
Well, sure. I guess is the answer.
Sure. I mean, maybe, I may be getting ahead of council on this one, but it would be easier for staff in drafting this, or thinking about this, if we knew how long this phase in may take. I mean, is this, if we're just going to go with the cost of inflation, it could be 20 years before it hits the number that it should hit right now. And in 20 years, it should be at a much higher number. So is this a three-year, is this a five-year phase in?
I would recommend two to, a two- to three-year phase in.
But at this point, council, the, what has been proposed, we only have three of us right now who are willing to move forward with this. So we're...
No, you have four.
I have Councilmember Fay, myself, and Mayor Protem, as well as you.
Yeah, at the current, at the current recommendation.
Let's go ahead and call it then. We have four to give direction, and we'll see what happens.
So we'll go ahead. We'll draft a proposed ordinance based upon council direction, and as it relates to the retail with a phase in over, I guess we'll go with three years, see what it looks like, and then we can make amendments from there.
And the retail is the recommended, not the reduced?
Correct.
Scott?
Yeah, I guess before we move on, I do want to make sure that we're addressing affordable housing in some way, right? If this ordinance needs to exempt affordable housing from impact fees, I think we need direction on that. It looks like the city manager has some comments.
I think that's, you know, that, that is something you could, you know, you could, you could do at the next, you know, appropriate or convenient time to do that. You wouldn't, you know, it's not something you have to do today.
I think the city manager's going to say it's a conversation that's coming up, and we can...
Exactly. Yeah, we've got it scheduled. I think the council goal around affordable housing, April? Can't remember offhand, I'm sorry. But yeah, this is certainly something we could add to the, to the goal, is a conversation around impact fees and how they kind of fit into that, if that's an objective of the council.
All right. Well, I think you have enough to move forward and draft something.
Thank you, Mayor, council.
All right, thank you. All right, let's move on to our second item.
Thank you.
Let's go ahead. It is 7:43. Let's come back at 7:50. Our next item, council, is ID number 21-039. It is the 2021 Local Partnership Funding. And you've had a chance to go through all the different organizations that have been requesting funds. And at the end of this, we're, we will give, council will give direction to staff to bring forward at a regular meeting, whatever it is we approve or agree to tonight. So with that, city manager.
Thank you, Meryl. I'll do just a little bit of an introduction, then I'm going to turn it over to Sam Fox, Assistant to the City Manager. She's going to run through a briefing here just on our process. So every year here at the City of Littleton, not uncommon compared to other cities, but there's always this conversation in the budget process about how the city may want to invest with typically what are nonprofits, in trying to create these kinds of partnerships, you know, to reach a deeper segment of our population, our community, than perhaps the city's typical services and programs. And so we normally do this in the fall, when we're putting the budget together. But of course, this past year, due to COVID, we kind of wrestled with timing and, in essence, what our real budget was. And so council did decide to allocate a set amount of money, and then tried to work here after the first of the year through our typical process. And so now that's where we're at this evening. And so with that, Sam, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mark. So as Mark mentioned, I'm Sam Fox, Assistant to the City Manager. This year, we allocated $65,000 for this program in the budget. We went ahead and opened applications in January, later than normal due to COVID. Staff then compiled all application materials in a summary for council and provided those for council review. Each council member made recommendations, which staff has built into a strategy we're going to present tonight for final award recommendations. Tonight, we'll be asking you to approve this strategy, and then we'll bring this back to a regular council meeting for formal approval. So a little bit about our applications this year. We received 26 applications, which is more than we received last year. This was 26 grant funding requests totaling almost $200,000. We received six in-kind service requests. And we've generally categorized these by human resources, community events, or other. We're going to start with the recommendations for the grant awards. So when we review, when I reviewed these and staff review, we noticed that five of seven council members recommended allocations utilizing the full budget. With that in mind, we looked for a set of criteria that would best match that. And I will say, we've done this a lot of different ways in the past. There are a lot of great organizations that have applied. With such a limited amount of funding, it's a challenge to award this. We've found that the best practice is to really focus on a clear set of criteria we can apply to all awards, and that's how we make our final award recommendation. Okay, so with that being said, we are recommending awards based on this criteria. Four or more council members have recommended an award. We are utilizing the average of those recommended awards, so we're not counting zero award recommendations, and we're rounding to the nearest $50.00. That brings us to a total award amount of $67,000. This is 2,000 over the budget. We can accommodate that within the current budget already. So we're looking for some guidance on this recommendation. If you're happy with us moving forward with this, we'll bring it back at a formal council meeting. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those questions now.
No questions.
All right. So then we'll talk about the in-kind grant recommendation, or the in-kind service recommendations. These are services for event support or even communication support. We have recommended approval for items where four or more council members supported the request. There is one request out of six that staff does not recommend approval for, and this is simply because it's not an in-kind service the city offers. So we do recommend approval for five of the six requests, based on four or more council members approving those requests and those being services the city can offer. If you have any questions on in-kind award recommendations, I'm happy to answer those now.
I see no questions.
Very good. So our next step is we will take this guidance, bring award recommendations to a regular council meeting, where you will formally approve these.
All right.
Thank you.
Nice job, Sam. Yeah, thank you, Sam. It's always a complicated thing every year.
It is. Thank you, everyone.
All right. City manager, anything else on this?
No, I'm just pausing on what just happened.
New record, questions. Sorry, no questions, is that what we're saying?
Let's, let's put that one in the archives so we can watch again next year. So moving on.
All right. Well, council, so our, our direction to staff is then, would be to either move on with this recommendation, and they'll come to us to a regular meeting, or not. Do we have anybody that's opposed to moving forward?
Yep. Can I just make a comment? If you look at the award recommendations and...
You know, if you look at the award recommendations, and clearly I was the low man on the totem pole when it was came down to how much money to recommend it, and certainly COVID was in the back of my head and what the city can afford. Not that I'm asking anybody to come down to the level I'm at, I'm almost half of everybody else except for Councilmember Fay, but it was just one of those things that I just wanted to sort of put out there and let people know that it's not that I don't believe in your cause, it's just I was looking more at the city's budget.
Great, thank you. City manager, I think you have direction. Great, thank you. With that, let's go into our city manager updates.
All right, thank you, Mayor. And counsel, I sent all of counsel an email here this afternoon. I did amend the agenda late last night here to brief all of counsel on the Arapahoe County Transportation Forum discussion that took place last Thursday night. Councilmember Elrod was a member of that transportation forum representing the City of Littleton. And I'll give the short version, and maybe Councilmember Elrod wants to kind of dive in a little deeper. But if you remember, we had a discussion here a couple of weeks ago about whether or not the City of Littleton was in a position to acquire and execute a contract for construction of a, you know, a portion of the quad road concept that we were contemplating here for mineral in Santa Fe, and this is specifically the northwest corner of the RTD lot. Well, long story short, in the transportation forum, there was some discussion about perhaps moving different types of money around and provide the opportunity for the City of Littleton to come back and actually build that quadrant, but execute the contract in the year 2024. Keith Reeser, our Public Works Director, is also here. Well, we just also received here, I guess, late last night or this morning, an email from CDOT raising some real questions about whether or not that's doable. And that's not quite their words. I think after discussions with staff and specifically with Keith, I think we need to honor CDOT's request and not use the money, the additional money here to try to execute a contract. It's just too complex, too many conceptual issues that CDOT is wanting to kind of play out. And more specifically, they're in the process of the PEL process for Santa Fe, and those recommendations may be actually in, you know, perhaps even in conflict with what we're considering at this moment. So I think CDOT is asking us to pass on this. So Councilmember Elrod, I guess I'll turn to you and see if you've got anything you want to add to that conversation.
Oh, no, we had a really long conversation that day, and Keith was even longer over many weeks. But it was, you know, I think what I will say is, you know, we had the opportunity, I had the opportunity to convey why we made the decision that we made. As you recall, Keith had pointed out, we were still waiting to hear back from Centennial, Arapahoe County, we were waiting to hear back. And really, no one came to the table with a firm decision except us at that time. So I think everyone was maybe trying to figure out how all this would play out, to be quite honest and frank. So the long and short of it, as Mark said, there was an opportunity for us to still retain those funds, given the, one of the primary reasons we rejected, rejected or turned down the funds was because of timing. So it was good to hear there are ways to work around that. So note to ourselves for the future to think through that, maybe a little bit differently or just ask those kinds of questions. And I'm sure they were asked, they just might have gotten a different answer when a different person was in the room. And I think, you know, I, of course, wouldn't, was not in a position to make a recommendation representing the council. Like, I didn't feel that was fair to make a call at that time, given the new information. And so I appreciate that Keith and Mark continued to follow up and see what options we have, whether it was still viable, risks are. And given what we know, I still support the decision that we had originally made. But yeah, it was, it was an interesting meeting. What? Keith's camera was off luckily, so you couldn't see his face.
Maybe, Mayor, I think the other thing I would just add is, you know, when we talked about this a couple of weeks ago, and I realize as difficult as the decision is to pass on that federal funding, the importance of executing a contract when you say you will take the money is absolutely paramount. And so I still believe, as Councilmember Elrod is sharing here, that we made the right decision here. I wish that things were different, but they're just not. And, you know, I think I would like to have lots more conversations just like this, to be honest. These are federal funds. We get to build projects that our citizens do not have to pay for directly. And so we are trying to take advantage of opportunities that, counsel, we never pursued, at least of any serious consequence. And I compliment Keith and his staff for trying to, you know, move us forward in that. So that's probably the other point.
And it was a very polite letter of just saying no way, no how. It was very good.
I just want to compliment Councilmember Elrod. I think this is really a job well done as council's liaison to Dr. Cog. I think we all appreciate it, so.
Yeah, good job. All right, anything else? City attorney?
Nothing from the city attorney, thank you.
And last but not least then, we have our next meeting, counsel, Tuesday, March 16, 6:30, followed by a study session. Also, be sure to look at your calendar, the council tentative calendar, because there was meetings added in there toward the end of the month, so make sure you look at that. All right? With that, the time now...
What meetings were added? I know just one extra on the 5th.
That's the one at least, yeah. Okay. So with that, it is 8:03, and we are adjourned.